Has the notice of this hearing been given in a time form and matters required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been issued. A affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received on the matter?
Communications got received and not issued.
Yeah, Mayor, nobody can hear.
Okay, hold on.
There might be a problem with the mics.
Hello?
It's her mic.
Here we go.
Okay, so have any communications been received on the matter?
Yes.
All right. Are they gonna be presented to us?
Um, how important is your hearing? We can read out and, because we put them in rolls of comments, like four and a half.
How many do you have?
Oh, I don't know.
Then I guess what we'll do is we'll pass them out to the council.
They're in a package, right?
You want me to read the names of who, um...
You can, you, you know, remember, this is new to me. So, so Mr. City Attorney, do we have to read these into the record or can we give them to the council so the council's aware?
You read them into the record for the next step of the comment.
What, what I'm saying, here at the meeting? Read them into the...
Yeah.
Is that necessary?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Well, would you like me to give the, the presentation first and then we do it?
No, I wanna hear the comments first. Go ahead.
Hey, hey, Louis, Louis, she's gonna read from there. Put your...
No, okay. Hold on, Mr. City Attorney, i- i- under that premise, if there were 5,000 comments, we'd have to read them. Wouldn't it be enough to get the name and whether they're for or against?
Yeah. That's what we've been doing for a couple of minutes.
It's a Piddlin, how we receive them, Mayor. We put down on our, on our agenda two ways. One was by email, so we were going to accept the comments by email. The second one was by telephone. The information hasn't been told yet, how this information was provided to us.
Yeah, I understand what I'm saying, but i- it would, it would seem that there wouldn't be a requirement that we'd have to read everyone that could sit at home and write an email. I, I would think it'd be whether they were for or against.
And if they're on the phone, Will could hear.
And if they're on the phone, they're, they're speaking.
Correct, but the city council has to be aware of all.
Council gonna take a break to review that information?
Yeah, we, we definitely can do that.
Most of it's on here, and we would have copies for you guys, and we'll send them home.
Okay.
Today, they came in a lot, um, they came today.
Okay, and then so...
And so, but we will make sure that you guys...
What's the total number?
And you'll get copies of this.
There's only ten in our short. Okay, today, we'll listen to them, okay. First ten, yeah, all right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
And for the record, the mayor makes an absolutely good point that if we had 100 of them under your construct...
Construct.
...construct, we'd actually have to read them, so we have to come up with a better resolution for that.
Correct, and...
Well, in the past, though, we've always just received...
Yeah. What we would do in that aspect of it is that we would ask the cor- or, excuse me, the city council to make a decision as to how much time we wanted to allow for that particular public here.
Exactly. I like that.
Okay.
Ken?
Come on up, Ms. Thompson.
It's your turn.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm going to read to you into the record those that have submitted comments regarding PH2. We have Leonard McEllen.
Okay.
He is against the permit parking. You have Joel Vallejo, would like to know how much the permits cost and how many will be allotted per residence. We have Juan, no last name given, and he would like to know if the permit parking would be permitted amended to the Chapter Three. He suggests implementing a street parking permit with a four-hour limit per, per, a four-hour limit permit during business hours between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday with one parking permit...
Thank you.
...per residence. Considering that many visitors to the upcoming new sports venue might want to use our residential area for parking, then a second option is to have street parking by permit 24/7 every day on, every day or on event days. Blair, no last name given, would like to know how many permits per household will be provided. Cheryl McKellen, uh, main concern is about permits, about parking permits on Inglewood City Streets. If you have a graduation, a birthday party, et cetera, will there be any special permits provided for such events? Judy Smith, resident at 539 South, 539 St. John Place, comments she's upset that her street is not included in the plan and would like for her street to be included per the parking permit. L. Bradford, no na- no last name given, is a District One resident, would like to vote no. You have the desk of Larry and Gwendolyn Goodman, and they vote no to the parking permit. Laura Lynn Penet- Penenza would like you to consider adding St. John Place to the citywide parking permit district plan. Mary Dyer was unable to download the PDF regarding it, regarding PH2, and she's interested in knowing if residents will be charged for the permits. If so, how many permits will be allowed per household? And if there are, if there will be visitors, will permits be available for visitors? That completes the comments received in the city clerk's office.
Okay. Are there any persons present who wish to address the council on the matter? Now, hearing no comments, public comment portion is now closed. Is there a motion or way for the reading?
Well, there's...
Oh, there's a staff report. That's right.
Oh, yeah.
Staff report.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. If you don't recognize me, my name is Louis Atwell. Staff recommends that a public hearing be conducted to consider amending Chapter Three of the Inglewood Municipal Code to implement a citywide permit parking district program. SoFi Stadium is scheduled to open late summer this year and will serve approximately 70,000 patrons. The city has worked to develop a robust off-site parking and shuttle program to help address the parking and transportation needs for the stadium while proactively working to protect the parking needs of surrounding neighborhoods that will be affected by the influx generated from these events. California Vehicle Code Section 22507 authorizes the city to adopt a preferential parking program which prohibits or restricts the parking of vehicles on public streets and to issue permits to residents, merchants, and their guests exempting them from parking prohibition or restriction. Furthermore, California Vehicle Code Section 22651N authorizes the city to remove a vehicle that is parked where the city has prohibited parking. These vehicle code sections require the city to place signs or markings, giving adequate notice before enforcing any permit parking prohibition or restriction and towing a vehicle for such violation. The proposed ordinance seeks to establish a citywide permit parking program which includes following updates to the code. Amend the procedure for establishing permit parking. Currently, IMC Section 3-76 requires residents and/or businesses to petition the city to request the establishment of a permit parking district. The Public Works Director is required to study the petition and present the findings and recommendations to the Parking and Traffic Commission. Thereafter, the commission may recommend the introduction of a permit parking district ordinance to the city council for adoption. The proposed ordinance, however, to establish or make changes to the permit parking district areas allows city staff and/or the council to make changes to the permit parking areas. And this makes it more efficient and flexible to allow, to resolve issues quickly. The permit parking district areas, the proposed ordinance expands the existing permit parking boundaries to better cover the 11 neighborhoods. All residential streets within the city limits will be designated as permit parking and are included in the citywide permit parking program. So, all city streets will be in the program. However, you know, with that said, there is a district which will not be enforced or will not be included in the program immediately and will be on more of a case-by-case basis, and that's District Two. 24/7 parking restriction and towaway, IMC Section 3-80 is amended to authorize a full-time permit parking restriction Monday through Sunday, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And citywide permit parking district activation, if the proposed ordinance is adopted, the Public Works Director must install signs and markings giving adequate notice of the 24/7 permit parking restriction and towaway to be placed active in order to activate a permit parking district for enforcement purposes. More effective enforcement tools, the proposed ordinance allows for the issuance and enforcement of parking permits through license plate reader technology. The LPR technology allows for license plate on each vehicle to be read quickly and efficiently versus the current process of having, hanging tags. The goal is to transition from physical permits to LPR permits to eliminate parking permit misuse and maximize the number of permits that can be reviewed by parking enforcement. And permit issuance, administration, and management, IMC Section 3-78 is amended to direct staff to prepare a chart outlining the various types of parking permits available for residents, business owners, and their guests, including but not limited to daily, monthly, and annual permits and the maximum allowed per use of permit. The chart shall then be adopted by resolution of the city council and made part of the master fee schedule. This allows for a quicker implementation of parking permit fees by the city council resolution. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mayor?
Councilman Morales, in comments.
Thank you. So, thank you to staff, first of all. I know this has been a couple of years of work. I know all of you guys are here. You should be applauded because this wasn't easy. You've also dealt with us individually, and I appreciate that. I know that we are still working through some of the scenarios which may come up. As you know, I belong to a district, we've actually been looking at this even before the stadium need came about, so I appreciate you guys taking the time to really discover what our issues are. That being said, I wanted to put on the record some specific items that I know we've discussed in the past, and I know you're either working on a solution or we've already come up with one to clarify that. And the reason I wanna do that is so that it can be brought up during the ordinance, whatever needs to be written into it, you can clarify that. The first one is when you have occasional visits. So, one of the issues that I brought up was the fact that, uh, and we, this goes with the understanding that special events, you can clock in, birthday parties, everything from funerals to special events, and all that is understood. What I am talking about is the occasional visit when you drop by to see, like, mom, right? Somebody drops by every day to, just to make sure that they're okay. They're probably there for 45 minutes, don't need a full permit, and I brought up the issue with you as to, you know, the level of time that that person would be allowed on a daily basis. If we firmly enforce, it would make it difficult for that family to have that adjustment. So, I know you were working on something, I don't, it's okay if you have not resolved that, but can you make the public feel that that is taken into consideration?
Yes, we can look into that, definitely.
Well, you said, we're, we're working on a solution for it. We're not only gonna look into it.
Right, well, what I mean is we're gonna resolve it to, to get a solution.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, no, you, you're gonna try because that sounds impossible.
Well, let's take it how it's possible. I, I, I was fine with us agreeing to the resolution, but I don't want to see it as an impossible solution because it's necessary. And the reason is because, for instance, there are some cities, and I brought it up at one of our, our meetings, where they get two hours of, for instance, if a ticket giver comes by a street and there's a vehicle in the middle of the day, and I should say that I, my expectation would be that it, this would happen between the, the times of nine and six or seven p.m., where if you see a car without a permit, you can give them an hour or two...
Of grace.
...of grace. And the reason that that's important is because, and, and I'll take my, my situation personally, and this is why I thought about it, not for me, obviously, we, we, we have permits, but we live with parents where my sisters are constantly checking in on them, and they don't stay very long, but they need to make sure that everything's okay. And if we're going through that, my assumption is that there are families that are going through that.
Right.
And I have to think that it's equally important for them to be able to stop by, see, many people stop by just to see if their parents woke up.
Right.
You know, and, and they don't stay long.
So, here's what I was thinking, the technology may allow us to input their license plate, and because they're a regular visitor to check on, let's say, the elderly, we could register maybe that vehicle to allow them on a regular basis to come by...
For certain motives.
...for two hours or something like that. We have great technology, and that's something that, when I say look into it, it's a matter of how we would do it...
Yeah. I don't wanna, I don't wanna open the floodgates, that's not my intention here, because our intention in actually doing this ordinance is to make our situation better. So, I get everything we're doing, but I definitely wanted to put a scenario like that on the table and make sure that we address it. Going on the technology, something that I know other members have brought up as well is the fact that, you know, the technology allows you to just drive down the street and do that. Currently, and I know you were looking into the availability of, if a house has four registered cars, they would be allowed to have two on the street at a time and two on the driveway.
That's correct.
It doesn't matter which ones. You, we're looking into the technology, being able to read, and as long as they have two, if they have three, the third one would make it beep, and then you would ticket it, right?
Correct.
So, so that's, that's something that I know that is a question out there, and I wanted to clarify it on the record that our technology is prepared to do that. Okay?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's something that, again, we need, I, I can't speak to the technology itself, but that is the goal, is to register, you know, a certain number of vehicles and allow only two on the street, but it doesn't, at any one time. So, if four vehicles are registered to a household, only two would be on the street, and they could rotate those vehicles.
Exactly, at their leisure. And, and the other item is the fact that you would actually be looking into, uh, the review, we can review this at any time if we wanted to bring it back, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and, I don't know, were you clear as to the fact that we're getting two per resident? Did you announce that?
No.
So, what it is, is, like we talked about, it would be up to two allowed vehicles on the street at any one time.
Correct.
You could register more than two vehicles, but only two of those vehicles could be on the street at any one time.
Correct.
Oh, good.
The other two could be on a driveway...
Yeah.
Or, you know, some, somewhere else outside the city.
No, and I'm saying that 'cause I, you know, I just wanted the public to understand, they get basically two street parking permits, because here, two of the comments actually asked, how many do we get? So, I just wanna be clear that they get two. And by the way, it was six people wanted the permit parking and four people did not want it. So, that's actually a sign that, that we're on the right track.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say that.
Amongst those ten people.
So, for now, those are my comments. I know we have some other stuff we're working on, uh, that I anticipate answers to as well. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, the staff.
Councilman Cadea?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, just so folks watching it out there, I know in District Two, we're gonna, we're, we're not gonna be brought into this right away. It's something that we're gonna evaluate, see if there's a need for it in District Two, as we live the farthest away from the stadium and anticipation of any cars parking in the District Two boundaries. I know, and, and I wanna thank you guys. You guys, your staff report was very well done. You guys gave us information of what other cities are doing, even a city out in, on New Jersey, so we can really take a look at what they're doing, and then we can take the good, the bad, and the ugly, massage it, and bring it into something here for our residents in Inglewood. That being said, I just wanna confirm. So, in District Two, we do have, I think, two or three parking permit districts. So, those districts will be included in this transition.
That is correct.
But the rest of the district will not.
Yes.
So, if you don't already have parking district permits in your area, you'll be fine. It's the ones that have it will just be brought into it...
Sorry.
...earlier than the rest of the district, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. And again, thank you and your staff that's here, you know, for doing an outstanding job on the staff report.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor?
I wanna make sure that everybody understands what this is for. This, this, this citywide permit parking, if you didn't catch it from Mr. Atwell, this is to ensure that when the time comes that people go back out in public and the time comes that all these arenas open on event days, we'll be able to protect neighborhood parking from people that choose to disobey the signs and directions and attempt to park for free in neighborhoods. Oops. Oh, no, I, okay, and choose to park for free in neighborhoods. So, that being said, that's why we're doing this. Now, I, I wanna make it very clear that the king of residential parking is Councilman Eloy Morales. He's on, he's on it 100% of the time.
And, and thank you for clarifying that, Mayor.
Okay.
And, and so... You heard it here first.
So, so, so he knows every permutation of every problem there will be with parking. He knows all the pitfalls of our attempt to regulate it, and so I'm appreciative, you know, that we have him here for these issues.
And, all kidding aside, Mayor, thank you for that. And what I want to say is that not only do we live within walking distance of the stadium, but we already have a parking issue. And, so those are things that I take very seriously because I live it and I know my neighbors live it. So, that's the key.
So, I wanna thank you, Lisa, Bill Thompson...
Vanessa.
Vanessa, all, you know, everyone that's been involved. This has been a, a department-wide focus, this traffic management, operations planning, and, and I appreciate your guys' work.
Comment, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Comment. So, you may have the dean that's a parking guru, but I am also right behind him, if not, I'm at the neck.
That is true.
And first of all, I wanna thank the staff and the people we've had on contract service to provide us a thorough evaluation and assessment, but I have several questions and concerns. I, first of all, thank you for now, what this program's implement. We'll be able to address that Uber and Lyft stuff that is now parking, residents are parking in, I'm sorry, spectators are parking in the residential streets and then picked up by Uber and Lyft to go to current events. I'm also having the issue with weekend warriors, where they will park their cars that are not residents on our streets in Imperial Village, and then come out with suitcases and go to the Green Line Station, go to the airport, and do a weekend junket. I'm also dealing with, and you, this is being addressed, where I have large overweight vehicles that are parked right there in the, in the district, and in fact, they constantly being ticketed but not towed. The proposed program you're implementing clearly addresses those items specifically. But I wanna address some more items that haven't been discussed publicly, and I wanna bring you to your staff report where on page three, the first big paragraph, you talk about the previous program, we used to have a residence on a certain block that wanted to have parking permits. They had to get 75% of the residents on that block to say, "I want this." This says that the petition must bear the signatures of adults of 75% of different households and/or businesses. It excludes what it used to be called the owners. So, an apartment, a tenant, now can give a vote on behalf of the owner. Is that what we're prepared to do?
Let Vanessa talk to that.
Yes.
It's Vanessa Munoz with World Engineering.
Yes, Vanessa Munoz with World Engineering. So, your current permit parking program allows both the tenant and the owner to vote on the property, and the existing program would just allow one vote for that address.
Okay.
So, that is correct. It could be the owner or it could be the tenant.
Okay, thank you. And, and also, we note that there's no guarantees that, to park on the curbside just simply because you get a permit.
Correct.
It just simply means that, that vehicle will not be ticketed or towed.
Correct.
Okay, so now, I'm going to the actual ordinance on page eight. It talks about the issuing of a permit, and particularly, and I'll use my area as an example, I am two houses from the corner of the dividing line of one district to the next. Some of my guests come to visit me. I end up parking my car, in, in this case, in the other district in order for my, my guest to park in my driveway. Do I now have to get a day pass or, or something of that nature in order to be able to park in that other district?
So, when we're, when we're doing the district's lines, we were trying to be very conscientious of keeping both sides of the street within the same permit parking district to avoid those type of scenarios. We will have the scenario at times where, at intersections, which I believe that's what you're describing, correct?
Yes.
You may have two districts. Unfortunately, that's very hard to accommodate because the reality is we cannot have just one permit parking district, 'cause you don't want the whole city being able to park everywhere with...
And I welcome that.
Right? So, there are gonna be some instances where a resident has a house in a corner and they have their main street, both sides of that street available to them, but no longer around the corner.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It answers the question.
Yes, okay.
Now, I wanna go to the fee structure in the Exhibit D...
Okay.
...that's been identified. I got mixed comments from the Walker consultants and their assessment of the fee structure versus what is posted here. So, I just need confirmation.
Okay.
And also, I'm gonna comment about other options, not options, other examples on how we, and I'll use my district specifically, on how we have challenges of other entities that come into the community that is only in and out, as, as my colleague said, only on interval, interval bases or just a few miles. Page four of your Exhibit D, you reference funerals are free. This is the Exhibit D.
Yes, that's correct.
But you say the resident must provide vehicle license plate for each vehicle attending.
Correct.
So, how is the pastor who's gonna have a funeral in the residential community, and I have several churches in my community residential, are going to identify who is going to attend the service to get that license plate?
Right. So, ideally, we would like to go with the license plate reader, which is the technology we're gonna use, but we know in the beginning stages, we may have to hand out the daily passes for that to facilitate it. We were also trying to be sensitive to the funerals because that is a moment in that person's life that's very sensitive. But ideally, we are gonna work with those pastors or churches to develop a good system to make sure that it works for everyone. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, I think that, we need to work on this one, this section.
We'll go with hard copy passes first, sorry.
Okay, so with the report from the Walker consultants, it says on page 11 that the funeral receptions and memorial services, they can get up to 25 one-day visitor parking passes...
Correct.
...per year for free.
Yes.
My district has several churches, several funerals at each church throughout the year. One 25-day pass is not, for the whole year, is not gonna cover.
It would not be per church, and it would not be per pastor, it would be per, like a family individual.
Ah, thank you for clarifying that, 'cause I was really concerned because...
No, no, it's not per church or pastor.
And in addition to the church, again, they have church anniversaries, they have pastor anniversaries, they have revivals. I go through that same process, just weigh in on how that's gonna be addressed.
I think for those, those are beyond a funeral, that they would, should be dealt with more as a special event type of scenario. And there's times even now under our current parking program where we have special events and we waive the permit parking during certain hours because it's, it's gonna impact too much of the area.
Yes.
We're trying to move away from that, but there's gonna be those special occasions where that's gonna be the only way to accommodate that special scenario.
Okay. Addressing the concern my colleague had regarding care for their adult parents, your staff report on page five of the Exhibit D, first item talks about medical care provider. Compared to the Walter consultants' report on page 11, it says, I'll use what you have in your Exhibit D first, that you can get up to three permit semi-annually free. The report from the Walker consultant says, "I get up to three medical caregiver..." The report from the Walker consultant says, I get up to three medical caregiver parking permits per year.
Correct.
Which one is it?
Well, we didn't, so the Walker consulting report was a guide for us. We didn't take everything verbatim from there.
Okay.
What we did is we took it as a formula to follow. If you, and I didn't bring the copy of that report, but there are some areas within the report that they are very general in their statements of, this is the research, we recommend cutting into various districts, we recommend into having a visitor program, and they gave us samples, and then we had to, based on the type of population and the density of the city, make some concessions. The reason we changed the medic or care provider, that's a change we made toward the end, was to ensure that it wasn't going to be taken advantage of. To be honest, we thought a year may be too long, and there's a lot of things that, that changed within residential neighborhoods, and it's still for free. And because we are electronic, we're not going to inconvenience the resident too much, because they can go into the portal with their login, enter the information, we verify it again, and it can be approved within 24 hours.
I like it.
So that, that was the, the reason for the deviation was again to minimize, minimize abusing the program.
So I have two other areas I want to cover. I mean, and they all fall under fees and permits.
Okay.
Standing with your page five of your Exhibit D, the last item on there addresses contractors and construction workers for active projects, $100 for it. I'm concerned that that value may be too high, when I like the consultant's recommendation of $50, because in my opinion, the $100 is going to be shifted to the resident to pay.
Right, it will, right, it will be part of the bid. You are correct.
So, so consider that.
Okay.
And then my last item has to deal with my daily, weekly issues, and that has to do with, I have daycare, I have schools in the, in the district that are residential, I have the gardeners that come once a week, I have maintenance services for the air conditioner heating services, I may have a plumber, painter, day laborers, AT&amp;T, DirecTV, Golden State Water, all that. How are they being addressed in your fee structure and/or permit process? I don't see that.
So they can be considered, I would not put them under contractors, because contractors for construction. I would consider them mostly under, you mentioned one that, I think the gardener especially, because that can be weekly by weekly, or, you know, that could be some type of in-home, in-home service.
Yes.
Just like your maid or your nanny, as part of that one permit. But they can also be part of the visitor permit. And we can look into it further.
I just want to look into it.
And add a different service category.
Because I want to stress, particularly with schools, with schools, I actually have the parents drop off little Johnny's, and then they got up twice a day, they drop them off and pick them up. I have the daycare that does the same thing. But then also, they have local, they have events. For example, some of the daycare actually has graduations in the summer. I want you to look into that. And then, also, like you said, weigh in on my other items regarding me having a person come, like a day laborer to paint, plumber work, I mean, contractor, but not construction. So if you're looking at those, I'll appreciate it, and those are my comments for this report.
Councilman Franklin, thank you very much. I just wanted to mention that, you know, as we discussed earlier from Councilman Morales, there will be people coming by the home on, you know, on certain times of the day for a couple hours. Those license plates can be registered as somebody who comes in to assist, and it may be a landscaper. Golden State Water would be exempt, because we know that they service the water meters in the areas, but we can register those vehicles, because if a gardener comes in once a week or once every couple weeks, they can put that license plate in there as a visitor.
And just be mindful, the gardeners go from one, and our, and our example I see in the report, this gardener of mine specifically goes into multiple districts, just in my, my area alone.
Sure.
So once he gets registered, then it could go from one location to the next?
Not necessarily, no, they have to stay within that zone. So each parking area zone has, is identified, and so if they go to a different area, an outside area, they have to be, whoever's home that is, has to make sure that they're registered within that area.
Okay, so, okay, I understand the comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Just, just one thing, Mayor.
Councilman Dodson?
I'm mostly concerned with two things. One, if somebody has a party or kids have a graduation, what, whatever, how do we cover that particular situation? And two, like you was telling Councilman Franklin, when we have gardeners who come and, you know, they, they may work in, in my house, and then they'll go across Manchester and work at somebody else's house. Now, who would be responsible to get that, that permit? The, the homeowners, the gardeners, or who?
Right, okay, so to answer your first question, for a birthday party would be a special event permit, okay? So they would register that particular day as a special event, okay? And they would input the license plates for, for those cars that are attending. And that's the way it works in other cities as well. As far as a landscaper goes, you just need to make sure that the landscaper that goes to, let's say, your house, you register that landscaper's vehicle as a visitor to your home for a couple hours a day. If they leave that area and they go to another home, that other home needs to make sure that they registered it as well.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if I could just clarify, just... Councilman Morales?
Thank you. Just to address all of that, I think we're on the same page for the occasional visitor. I was hopeful that we could come up with a situation where no registration, what you do, and you can consider this, a daytime restriction from the hours of, say, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which would allow any vehicle to stay with for two hours maximum, and the, the enforcement could come by, chock the tires, or whatever is, is, is more technologically available, and then that would be it. You would do it from Monday through, let's say, Friday or Saturday only, and that would give us the Sunday for the NFL, and it would be only during the hours of 8:00 and 6:00, which would allow the residents to enjoy what we're trying to do, their parking after they get home from work. So I just wanted to put that out there as a possibility.
Okay.
Because we all have that occasional concern.
The, the only issue that I see is the stadium's not only going to have football events, they're going to have other events during the day, during the week, and...
Monday night football, Thursday night football?
Well, not only that, they're going to have other events. They're, they could have a car show, they could have, and maybe somebody just wants to go for a couple hours.
So during, during those days, like we said, two hours is something I threw out there. It could be one. If someone parks at my neighborhood and they have one hour to park there, it's going to take them 25 minutes to walk to the stadium, they have to turn right back. Okay, they're not going to do it very often. So what I'm saying is that those are possibilities that we need to look into.
Sure, understood.
And be, be mindful also, Councilman, I've also had the experience of dealing with 24-hour daycare service, home care service, so, and there's a rotation of the care.
Doesn't that go far towards medical?
Yes, it does.
Like, medical, I mean, everybody agrees that's necessary.
Right, you're allowed, exactly. You're allowed to register the medical.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Think we've exhausted that one. Okay.
Mayor, I move a motion away from the reading.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Buzz.
Aye, I'll introduce the ordinance. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?